I don't want to talk in any more detail about the staff member because I don't want it to be in any way person identifiable to one person. But the backpack was taken out of the car, the window was broken. It did contain pictures of students, their names, and a number, which it turned out was on a badge with, it had a number on it. And that number was their library number to check out books under, so it's a single account in a self-contained system. When we found out that this had occurred, we put tech on it, we consulted PACE Insurance, and we also notified those families in good faith within 24 hours. But we determined that there was no real leak of any information that PACE would deem that we had a legal requirement to do. So we just did so in the best interest of keeping families aware. We did increase security, release systems in the building to see if someone would come in and maybe attempt to take a kid. We have not seen anything that looked fishy from that point on. And there is no information there that would have compromised our student information system or anything like that. And so, but we did notify anyway out of an abundance of caution and just to be in good faith. There has been some concern apparently online about that. We have continued to communicate that there are no issues with this. In fact, PACE informed us that we were, technically, we were not required to send anything out in this event. We just informed them because we felt we needed to be in good faith. So you guys have any questions about that?
So just to clarify, it has, the information that was stolen has students' names, pictures, but nothing that would allow someone to be able to check out a student, like the least student in there.
Okay. I'm assuming it was a district laptop?
It wasn't even an electronic device. I think it was a series of, like, just paper that had pictures and stuff.
Oh, so you mean it was a print-on copy?
Yeah, I think it was just a, they were using that to learn who the kids were and their names. I think it was a new staff.
And the laptop was not district property?
Okay, so it really wasn't associated with the lost information for the district?
No. Again, winter weather coming, we will start to run through a practice notification just so we have the network ready for when we do have weather. We're losing, is it daylight savings time that we're gaining or losing?
On Sunday.
We're falling back next Sunday, and we know that that will be coming up. Want to run through a little bit of the strike planning contingency. We'll just verbally take you through this. The details are behind it, but we just want to make sure that we make it very clear that the district preparing a strike contingency plan does not reflect the district's wish to move to a strike. In fact, we want very deeply to avoid the strike. We want to continue to work with the GAEA bargaining committee to avoid that. But we also have to have a plan. We cannot, on the very last day, start the planning. So just in general, we know that our schools are not going to work without our great teachers. And so in terms of a school day, we will be closed. Certified teachers who report to work during a period of strike will be paid and have all benefits. It is the intent of the district and the board to not cause financial hardship for classified employees because they cannot legally strike. They are not a bargaining unit that doesn't have a contract right now. But we want to make sure that we hold them as harmless as possible. And we will be working a more detailed plan out for those classified employees as we move forward. Students in high school co-curricular activities will continue to participate. We will notify the OSAA. Our intent to have those students still participate in scheduled contests and practices. Certified teachers who are coaching will not coach during the strike period. And we are making sure that teams that are participating at that time, in the event of a work closure due to a strike, that all the coaches who are present with the students will have their OSAA certification so that we are in compliance as well. Finally, we already know that we will be using nutrition services and we will be taking care of meals. We can use buses to deliver them. And we will also be working to see what kind of child care options we can set up with either the schools or with local nonprofits such as Boys and Girls Global, MCA. Any comments?
I have a clarifying question.
Yep, go ahead.
So, first sentence under number one, "schools will be closed during the strike period," is what it says. But the way you describe it to me is that school, the buildings will not be available for scholastic activity and that we recognize that we can't teach during that period of time. But whether or not we can do something in the buildings that are of some service to parents and families and the taxpayers, it's not yet a determined...
That's right. We would work on what that might look like, whether it's a half-day with practice, no new lessons. And in terms of the state counting it as a school day, we would need our teachers present to do that.
Thank you for the clarification.
So more information to come. That's the general outline of what we are proposing to undertake at this time. And of course, we hope that we can avoid that at all costs. So I have a quick bargaining update. We had mediation last Friday. I think the team started at 9:00 a.m. and we finished at 10:00 p.m. or thereabouts. At the close of the day, one of the, I think, signal issues in the bargaining is student discipline. It was under Article 22. And I think there were real concerns about student behavior in classes. If we removed a kid from a class, how quickly did the student return to class? And we were able to work out some language there. Really appreciate the GAEA team and their work on that. I think that language has crossed the table probably not less than six times in the bargaining, starting late, well, it wasn't very long after we exchanged offers in May, that this began to pass back and forth. For us to reach the agreement took some flexibility and some creativity. We were glad, and this is no comment on Sean not being able to be there, but we happened to have the former special ed director of the district, Ryan Mattingly, there at the time as well. And I think he helped us to work through that. So really appreciate the work that the bargaining team did on our side, but also appreciate the bargaining team for GAEA for their work to get this done. So that moves us forward. We hope we can build on the spirit of what was accomplished there and head into the next mediation date, which is Monday, November 4th. And we want to bring our solving game to that as well. So one of the things that came up at the very end of the day was class size language. There is concern apparently about class size in the district. And I would just want to make it really clear that this district has worked really hard to have class sizes low, particularly at the early elementary grades. If you see the kindergarten number there, 21.76, first grade, 21 kids a class, second grade, 21, third grade, 20, fourth grade, 23, fifth grade, 24, you can easily see that the district has placed a priority, even within the buildings, to make sure that the early elementary grades have a very low number. Speaking with a former principal from Salem Kaiser the other day, and he's here now, I think they had, they were in a title school. They have numbers above 30 at those same levels, right? So, and so there's always a great question, is it a problem? Or, you know, if it's not a problem, then why would you have a problem accepting numbers? One of the things that's hidden in here is that these numbers generally are low because this district has a practice of using straight-grade classrooms. And so very often, you may have a first-grade classroom with 16 kids in it, 17 kids. Very often, you will see, like in Salem, they have moved to blending classes because class size is something that they're working on. Well, size versus a blend becomes a very difficult choice. We think that the MTSS system is best run by straight-grade classes. And so what happens then in these small schools, you'll have some variation. There are several teachers that could say, "My class is bigger than that." But there are several teachers that could say, "My class is smaller than that. That is just an average." But they are all straight-grade classes in this district at this time. And so those are the kind of things that are what we already have. And so we will work with an eye to perpetuating and preserving the environment. You'll recall, about 90% of our teachers thought this was a good place to work. Those class-size averages have something to do with that. It's not unimportant that we have a good learning environment where people like the classes that they face every day. That's all I have, and I'll turn it over to Jane for the fiscal.
Good evening. So I wanted to start with the ADMR. We were able to do our first quarter reporting, which is really the month of September. And I wanted to compare that to budget for you and show you what that means. So the budgeted ADMR, average daily membership. And remember, that's the number of students at the number of days they attend. So that is 8926 in the budget. And remember, when we did the budget, our 2324 looked higher than it ended up. ODE made adjustments to our reports. And so that is why the budget is actually high. And our 2324 adjusted was 8804. So that's a negative 122. And ODE allows districts in a declining enrollment to be paid at the best of either the current year or the prior year. So that negative 122 becomes our floor. That's the lowest that we would go. So if this current year stays as it looks right now at 8765, it won't harm us financially because we will be paid at the 2324 number. So our maximum reduction to our basic school support is $1,321,626. Does that make sense? And so, next steps, I like to wait until I see the second-period ADM, and then I make changes with ODE. And so oftentimes, second period is a little higher. And that's for two reasons. Because that first period is just September, if a student starts a couple of weeks late, that impacts their attendance, impacts the total. And high school students taking college courses through this district, they don't start until a couple of weeks in. And so that also affects that number. So second period will often be higher than the first period. And so then in January, I will let ODE know our projected number, and they will reduce our funding accordingly. And so I wanted to show you across time the average daily membership. And although it looks, it is discouraging, but if you look between the actuals for 2024, the 8804, and 2025 first quarter, it's really only like, let me write it down, a 35 deduction. And so, 39. And so the trend is slowing. And so that encourages me that maybe we will flatline or increase, hopefully. And so if you, the next slide, if you combine the reduction in student counts, the increases in our expenditures, the cost per student is increasing every year. And so between 2020, 2025, it's a 33% increase of per-student cost. And so that will be a challenge to us going forward in our budgeting. And then unemployment, I told you I would bring you information when I received our invoice. We received the October invoice, and when I saw it, $143,000, first glance, I thought, wow, that's really good. But then I started looking in it, and I noticed there were lots of names that had applied that were not in your information when I received our, so called Lawrence Company, their unemployment agent. Explain to me that the same 15 people who worked at them when we were in office two years ago are still the same number of employees that instead of processing thousands, including employees, they're processing hundreds of thousands. And so he believes, explained to me that the people who are not including in the invoice will be in our, are January invoice. They'll be in the next quarter. And so I really don't have a perfect idea of what our costs will be. And so in talking with our agent, he estimated our cost between 550 and 1,750. And I think he likes to be cautious. So, and so I really, I feel good that probably we'll be, in what our budgeted, 575,000, I believe, for the 2425 year, we will be within that number. And I think he likes to be cautious. I think we did a really good job estimating that. I feel good that we will be within our budget.
The only thing I would add is, we set aside a number of relying on some chariot, right?
Yes, we started that fund with $200,000.
So we have 200, and then we...
I think we did a really good job estimating.
$200,000, $250,000, you guys recall. Another thing I would add is, what we wanted to add, and see if it was in chariot. So the number that Jane is thinking, we'll expend that.
Yes, we started that fund with $200,000.
And then we'll need to, and we're going to work with the legislature as well to see how this might change. But we would not start with $200,000 to budget above chariot. We would start, we would expend that, we would have to spend that, look at that total number, and then all that to begin. And we're going to work with the legislature as well.
And Lawrence Company is agent for almost every district in the state, excluding Salem, I believe. And last week, towards the end of the week, they were having a meeting with the governor's office, taking the information, and advocating for almost every district in the state that may have, excluding Salem, I believe.
So, Ms. Wors, do we have sound or do we not have sound?
And last week, they were having a meeting with the governor's office, taking the information, and advocating for school districts that may have.
So, Ms. Wors, do we have sound?
I wanted to talk one more time about the 30 million that we hear about that the district has. And this is our $28,911,964 budgeted. I wanted to talk one more time about any fund balances across our budget that the district has. And so the dollars served a variety of 11,960. Most importantly is they provide cash for us to ensure that we can pay our bills. We don't have to borrow money until we receive our tax collections in November. I think I had told you last year, there were several districts that were borrowing together to be able to make it until November. And, you know, thankfully, we were not one of them. And so, out of the funds, we have six funds. General Fund is the only fund that those dollars are not restricted on how we spend them. So we started a year with the beginning of the month, in the General Fund, of $15.9 million, or 12%. And remember, your board policy, so we started a year, which is, right around 10, a $15.9 million. So we plan to utilize about $5 million of that this year. So we're putting one-time funds to expand in 2425. $25 million of that this year. So we're putting one-time funds. And we did this very planfully as we were building the budget for several reasons. We supporting classified staff, we increased their cost for bargaining. And we planned for the bargaining license, we realized that they increased their cost. They were behind comparatively to the districts. We knew we would have to give them an offer. And so we are utilizing fiber mean that towards that goal. And also, when we are building the budget, we are trying to eliminate, are utilizing layoffs. And Susie worked really hard, we had positioned cuts. But we utilized part of $5 million to avoid additional cuts that would result in layoffs. And so then also, I just wanted to give you perspective on the tax plus and numbers. In '23, '24, our total payroll cost was $97 million. So that's approximately $8 million a month. July and August are much smaller. It's really more like $10 million a month, September through May, and June is huge. Anyway, each month, approximately $9 million. So an $8 million reserve balance is essentially one month of expenditures. So just to have perspective as community members talk to you or you talk about that $28 million, it really has a purpose, and it is, it supports the district.
Okay. So, I ask a lot of questions. I'll try to limit it here. So, so the difference between the $28 million and the $15 million, to clarify, that other $13 million has substantial strings that comes with those.
Correct.
Correct. Thank you.
It is. It's divided between the other five funds. And so $13 million... And so 13,011,964 is the total of our restricted funds. And so one of them is our special revenue fund. That's all of our grants. And the grants, of course, are restricted by the grantor, whoever gives us the dollars. And also there's about a million dollars in our ASB fund that's restricted. And our food service fund is very restricted by the federal requirements of that program. And then we have debt service. We have three debts payments. We have the PERS bond. We have the capital construction bond. And we have the transportation building, which is a full faith and credit loan. And we started that fund with about 900,000. And in July, we make about a payments of about a million five in the debt service fund. And then we have our capital projects fund. We started the year with 6 million in our bond fund. And we have the excise tax fund that has a million something. And we have a small capital projects fund for facilities that we started and a small technology capital projects fund. And then lastly, we talked about the 200,000 in the unemployment fund. So that makes up the balance of those 13 million beginning fund balances. And lastly, as I just was thinking about all of this and putting it together and working on putting together a budget calendar, I just really see a lot of challenges as we look forward to the 2526 year. Number one, we are reducing our beginning fund balance by 5 million. Those are one-time funds. We see decreasing student counts, which results in, of course, reduced basic school support. Our increased salary and benefit costs. And then the potential of unemployment costs. As I was visiting with Lawrence Company, they said, based on our school size, based on what he sees, for next year, he would budget between 750,000 and a million because he's seeing continued enrollments. And this quarter that we received, I can see the weeks that people applied. And there were many that were in the last few weeks. They didn't apply towards the end of July. And so, you know, I think that tells me it's a trend that more people are applying. And then PERS cost, our rates are increasing both for tier one, tier two and opposite approximately 4%. And just based on the payroll costs we have now, that's about a 2 million increase for the 2526 year. So lots of pieces that will all combine together to make it challenging.
So just because, so to employee, we give 6% towards PERS, right? And then we picked up the 6% that wasn't employee. We've done that for both classified and certified, correct?
Certified has
Has had that.
2008, I believe they shifted. So they've had the payout.
So pretty much everyone employee, we're putting 12% towards PERS.
Yes.
Okay. So now you're talking about this cost. Is this a cost over and above that?
So this is the rate. It goes towards the district's unfunded liability. So at the PERS, we have a large liability for all the people who have ever worked at GAPS and will retire in the future.
Sure.
And they charge us an assessed rate on payroll for the portion of that liability. And those rates are increasing by 4%.
So it's increasing 2 million. So I mean, 2 million for us is 2% and a half, 2%, right? Of our budget.
That will be assessed next year.
Okay. So what, what's our normal cost? So if it's increased by that, I mean, if we're paying 10, 12% already, what else do we pay?
You're paying much more than that.
Okay, so why, so how much?
I didn't bring those totals with me, but I could certainly provide that.
Because that's, that's, that's cost, right?
It is cost. And there's another component that I will bring to you as I learn more. But we have a PERS bond that will be sunsetting, which will cause our rates to increase significantly. And Andy and I have an appointment scheduled with Carol Samuel, the PERS expert, to learn exactly what that will mean to GAPS. And so I can bring all of that back to you when we have that information.
So I guess my concern is, so right now, what is it? Do we know what it is now? I mean, over the 12%, we don't know. So we're guessing this is a $2 million increase. But when we're saying $2 million increase, that makes you think it's a big cost right now?
It is. It's the largest portion of the associated payroll costs that we pay.
Right?
The 6, the 6 is picked up. And then this unfunded liability number, those together are far more than social security or anything else that we would charge off as an employee cost above their, you know, for every dollar we give them. Right? I can't speculate on the number. I would say upwards of 35%.
So our payroll costs in total right now are 37%. Social Security, FICA, Medicare, PERS, unemployment, all in, 37%. We'll be adding another 4%.
So it'll be at 41%.
PERS by itself generally in local districts runs between 20 and 30% of payroll. I wouldn't want to make a guess in this district.
Sure.
And PERS is funded, PERS is funded at about 75 to 80%. It's underfunded 20%. And so based on the market and it goes up or down, generally it's been up. One of the, one of the problems or one of the potential reliefs would be that PERS calculates the 18 months in arrears. So example, the market has gone up substantially in the last year. We don't, we don't get credit for that anyway. So it's a problem. And in general, I don't know about the school district, but in other local government, for every dollar you pay in payroll because of the benefits, your cost is, you're approaching 2%.
Right.
And so part of the reason for the increase across the state, they are seeing salaries increase significantly. And as Roger said, the calculation is based on the payrolls. And so that is having an impact on the rates increasing.
Could you explain the bonds and what that expiring will do? What was that? How did, I'm not sure what that was.
So we received a rate credit because we bonded PERS debt, paid that those dollars to PERS. And the interest that was earned across years was greater than the rate that we were paying. And so it has reduced our rate significantly. And when that bond ends, when the rate credit ends, we will lose the debt service payment, which is good because we assess like 12% against all payroll for the debt service. But the credit we receive from PERS is greater than that. And so that's the analysis to do is to learn the differences between the rate credit we receive and the debt service that we would no longer be paying.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, are you done? Okay, board reports. Sean, do you have anything?
I just have a couple of clarification questions. One, we've been, at least me, I can't speak for everyone. I've been getting emails from parents wondering about percentage of salary, staff costs, whether that be classified, certified, or administrators. I was just looking for some clarification. We've seen in the past that, I don't remember if it's 81 or 89% for all of staff. Is that accurate?
Yes, 81.
Okay. Is there a way to get a potential different breakdown between administrators versus classified versus certified? Just so we can have that information for parents?
Yes.
Okay, sweet. Another quick clarification question I had. So the first off, or the last offer, the final offer before mediation from GADA was, I don't remember the exact dollar amount, but was for an amount that when added up between all of the different requirements through the different language, through the different articles, would have been somewhere around 201 staff members had to be laid off. I wasn't able to be at the October 25th meeting, but there was a new offer given at that point. I'm not saying this is a couple of days later, in terms of workdays. Do we have any idea what that offer would put at in terms of what, if we were to fulfill that, what would the layoffs have to be at that point?
So I can talk just a little bit about that. So when IMPAS was called, they then had to publish an offer with only names or signatures in it. We estimated that to be $64 million in costs over three years. That during mediation, you have the ability to put offers forward as ideas, but it does not pin them down. They presented two, and I have not explained that out and sent that to you yet because the two offers were slightly different. One of them was a little bit cheaper, but had permissive subjects in it and was presented as an option and not the first one. But it would, my, I would not speculate. We can calculate that out. But there was still a significant amount of money on the table in over those offers. In other words, it didn't vary much from the original offer. Thank you.
Roger, anything you'd like to say?
There's a lot I'd like to say.
Anthony, you want to say a moment?
Look, I just, we've had some good momentum occur over the last couple of years in this district. It looks like in moment numbers, despite what's going on at the state level, it started to neutralize. We actually have some hope that they will go up. We've avoided mass layoffs that other districts have seen because we didn't create budget clips. And in general, I think the community has been both proud of and supportive of things going on here at the district. I do think that this contract negotiation with the teachers is testing the public's support for our organization as a whole. And we're at a point, or we will be at a point, where collectively, we lose that momentum and things go backwards. I don't know that we're there today, but I do know that for me, they want a contract and we can get them a contract next week just by agreeing to binding arbitration. And I want to be careful in that, not interfering with the team negotiating on both sides. But I, for me, I am an advocate for it. And I think it's something we will need to put in further on that and commit whatever that is to the community. I think Jane's presentation was very good. It pointed out about $5 million that we are deficit streaming this budget cycle. And that leaves us with 10, I'm sure. So in theory, without cost correction, 2 would work. And so what, even at the length of this we've proposed, I wish my team, I've gotten communications as many of them about things that are just blatantly really not correct. And I don't know where it's coming from, but that doesn't help a senior, right? I do want to make clear, or ask Jane one question. One of the allegations I got today is that we are hoarding money to the extent that we're putting state and federal grants on January. So I would better respond to that.
I'm not sure how they think that we received a lot of state and federal grants and they're managed. Reimbursable grants, so we spend the dollars and then every quarter we are reimbursing the dollars. And so we can buy all federal and state grants to manage.
So the answer to that is no. Jane, you know this.
Correct.
Okay. So how do we, how do we avoid the budget cliff in the next two years based on our current? What are the resources we can use to manage that?
I think it's just important that we monitor and we watch and we have a plan for what we have been. For the past two years, we've reduced positions. I believe we may come back again. And so just being able to prepare and having a better time and working with you is good. And how this will avoid a lot of downs.
Okay.
Kind of for the 60 million that they're asking for.
Well, you know, all the more reason in my view to agree to binding arbitration and get this thing done. And we're stuck with whatever we're at and we're able to focus on the community and kids.
We have a great plan for that. We have planned a budget to operate in a contract that brings them whole with what they had lost over time. And to me, that makes sense that we continue in that path so that we don't put the district in command to jeopardize.
Yeah, I wanted to personally thank the Smithsonian who answered the call at the sunrise and went out there and helped with that. As being one of these person, I would deal with such things in my business. It's not a pleasant job. It's not fun. And I truly appreciate everyone who went out there and helped to get that school back in shape. And, you know, I know we're not quite there yet. I know we're working hard. It's not easy. It's not fun. But it's really important. So thank you, everyone who's gone out there doing that. I really, really appreciate that. As far as Jane goes and our budget, I think there's nobody, no better person to help us navigate the financial space as we go forward. So thank you for your diligence. We look forward to those numbers back. And we all appreciate our teachers and we know that they need an increase in salary that we could fill behind. And we, that's, at the long negotiations, we never said that that was in doubt. The really good question is, what can we do for them? And hopefully through the bargaining process, we'll find a place that we will be.
First off, for me, I'd like to just pony up on, thank you to all those that are helping out at Sunrise. I mean, that's huge. You know, to help keep our schools ready to go. I mean, coming in when we need to, the leak, you know, all those kinds of things. Those are inconveniences that anybody, you know, has to deal with those things. It's tough, right? I'm encouraged to hear about the progress we've made on our recent bargaining sessions. Our teachers have an extremely tough job with tremendous changes in the teacher environment over the past couple of decades. While we've made several positive changes in our district, these changes have not occurred quickly as we all would prefer. However, the state's formula for funding our districts has not kept up with the changes in our students' needs and their learning environments. Ryan and myself will be attending this year's Oregon School Board Association yearly conference in a couple of weeks. And we'll be striving to collaborate with other districts to achieve positive changes for both our districts and Oregon public education. We plan to collaborate with our district's unions to bring to this conference the most important topics from our district's perspectives to make a positive change in Oregon public education. I believe funding, behaviors, absenteeism, unfunded mandates, and many other topics could easily be agreed upon within our district and brought to the conference, it could be agreed upon with other districts. I believe if we unite all participants in our district along with other districts and take that message to our state legislature and governor, this would be a powerful message and give us a really great opportunity to make positive changes in public education within our state. On the other hand, if our teachers strike along with other district teachers, this too would be a powerful message to our legislators and governor. But it would cost our students, parents, staff, and community. Our district has collaborated with our teachers and we have come to an agreement on some of their biggest issues. Our district's financial offer is strong and is better than many districts in negotiation currently. Bottom line, I do not believe it is in the best interest of our district's students, teachers, other staff, parents, or the community for our teachers to strike. We have the ability to bring the same urgency and issues to the state in a less damaging manner to everyone. Collaboration and unity of purpose to lobby our state legislators and governor makes much more sense than a teacher's strike that will harm our students, staff, parents, the community, and create a disharmony among our district's staff. To me, it's just common sense. Let's work together and make changes in our state's education for the betterment of all.
Okay, uh student programs, who wants to go first?
So at West Albany, there's been like um a new belt system that kind of brings uh three minutes before class starts to possibly um kind of like illuminate some tardies. Um, and students have undergone some uh changes to our passwords, uh which many of us have had for many years. Um, there's uh Asian Pacific Islander Club meeting this Wednesday and a chess club meeting after school on Wednesday. Um, a Latinx meeting Thursday and as well as a cup assembly. Um, and a Black Student Union meeting on Friday. Um, and uh last Friday, we went against Dallas in football. And there's a girls soccer meeting versus Central Illinois twenty nine.
Is your passing period normally ten minutes or is it ten minutes?
Um, it's it's usually around ten minutes.
Okay, so then you get a three minute warning, you get to class?
Yeah.
Uh, well, first off, Albany, we have our senior night events happening. For example, tomorrow's a girls soccer night and then on this Friday's football cheer and dance. Uh, we'll have senior night. Uh, we're also reaching our mid our mid-term mark. We started by helping rising, which is our tutoring service after school, which uh highlights the upcoming progress report for a lot of our students in the period uh parent teacher conferences. It's reinforcing our students to get their grades up and reminder that if your progress report's not good, your parent won't be happy with you. And so we're really highlighting that and getting them up to work and just hoping that they show up to class and do their work like they're supposed to. And that's all for some.
Thank you. Uh, committee, community, and school presentations don't have any today. Consent agenda, personnel license, looking for a motion.
Move to approve as presented.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? J two, personal classified.
Move to approve as presented.
A second. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposed? J three, minutes, regular board meeting, October fourteenth, twenty twenty four.
Move to approve as presented.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposed? Whole business, K one, E B C A, safety threats.
This was uh this is second reading. Um, it is now ready for a motion to pass. This is the uh new requirement that we notify uh the circumstances of a school um secure, which was the old lockout that that has to be uh out to parents. And it also has to indicate why we did that. So pretty pro forma, generally consistent with our practice, but we're gonna have to be a little more in depth about why a lockout occurred, a secure occurred.
Recommended pass.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve policy, E D C A is presented.
A second. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposed? K one B.
This was another one, second reading. You guys discussed and read this last month. Uh, this is uh clarifying the types of public records that can be requested. Recommended pass.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve policy, K V A is presented.
A second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, we're done with that, we're on to L, report, Division twenty two. Mr. Schmidt, you're up.
I've been waiting the whole time to have this presentation. I need to get logged into the something. That can even get left again.
I apologize.
Shouldn't have queued up to the right spot. Uh, tonight I had the opportunity to present um a report from last year um to ensure that we've met our Division twenty two standards and assurances. Uh, and I'm gonna go through a short presentation um on where we ended up last year and then where we're gonna be looking forward to this year in order to be compliant um for our next submission. Uh, the this isn't done in isolation. Um, you can see the number of staff members that were involved in going through this process. Uh, it is a district-wide approach, um and it requires us to look at our complete program. Um, anywhere from facilities uh to our counseling programs, to the curriculum that we offer, um activities in human resources, and it's it's very comprehensive. I want to thank those of people that have been involved. Uh, I could not get all this done without them, um so I'm very appreciative of their their contributions. Why do we do this? Um, these standards, um the Oregon Legislature or the State Board has determined that these must be met in order for us to be considered a standard school district. Uh, this signals our commitment to providing a high-quality education experience for and equitable opportunities for all. Uh, and these assurances um process, this process offers an opportunity for districts not in compliance to reflect on areas in need of attention and receive technical assistance where necessary. Uh, fortunately, um our areas of non-compliance are are very minimal. Um, I'll explain where those are at, um and they um have some very easy remedies. Uh, what this looks like is uh I sent out a shared document uh with each one of these standards. You'll notice that the standard is listed here on the left. Uh, it identifies in text what that standard is about. Uh, this is what we look for um in order to demonstrate that we have completed or met that particular standard. The staff member is listed there that's responsible for that and then whether or not we're compliant. So these links are all examples of how we're meeting that standard, so it's not just a matter of saying yes or no. Uh, there is work that goes into making sure that we're compliant in all areas. Uh, it's a combined accountability model uh where we report annually to see if we've been compliant with each of the each of the standards. Uh, again, we have an explanation of why or why we did not meet that standard. And if we did not, we need to have a corrective action plan in order to meet for the subsequent year. Uh, in terms of local accountability, we must report this out. Uh, we must report to you by the first of November, we're getting in under the wire. Uh, and then we will make this report available on our website by the first. We then submit to O D E by the fifteenth of November. Uh, O D E will review all of those submissions to make sure that we're correctly self-reported um or if we're out of compliance in any particular area. The standards are broken up um in over, it's actually sixty different rules. Uh, and it's divided into these categories um that have to do with teaching and learning, health and safety, district performance and accountability, and human resources and staffing. Uh, based on the number of colors, you can see where the majority of standards come from, uh what we do in classrooms with students, ensuring that we provide a healthy and safe environment for all. Um, and then we have smaller numbers of compliance standards in the last two categories. To give you a breakdown, uh when we look at the teaching and learning side, uh it revolves around making sure we've met the required amount of instructional time, uh if we've adopted the proper curriculum for that particular adoption cycle, uh if we have a comprehensive school counseling program. In addition to that, how are we administering our statewide assessments, identifying talented and gifted students, and providing a variety of credit options for students in order for them to earn their high school diploma? When we look at health and safety, um it has to do um with the Every Student Belongs Act, ensuring that we have an active suicide prevention plan uh and that we have safety in all of our school sports um and making sure that all of our coaches have cleared all O S double A uh training um and compliance measures. In terms of our district performance and accountability, uh it's have we met our fingerprint background checks? Um, have we performed all of our uh evaluations as prescribed by the state for our licensed staff? Uh, and have we provided teachers with the appropriate amount of training? One of those uh that was enacted for this year was a training staff uh to work with students who suffer from uh dyslexia as a disability. Uh, what happens if we're out of compliance? Uh, the O D E police will come and take us away. Uh, actually, that's not true. Uh, they'll review our proposed corrective action plan. Uh, and that's really what they're asking us to do if we're not compliant. Uh, the plan essentially gets approved by O D E and if it doesn't, they'll provide us technical assistance in order to meet that particular standard. Uh, once we have that approved, they will give us additional support if necessary. Uh, and then that corrective action plan must be met by the following school year. Uh, if the district fails to come back into compliance after an opportunity for corrective action, O D E may uh withhold a portion of the district's state school fund, um and that's not a good thing. So uh, you know, while we have issues of non-compliance, uh we don't want to carry that out because they could withhold funds from us depending upon what that item is. Obviously, things of not meeting the minimum number of instructional minutes is much more impactful uh or not meeting the proper evaluation guidelines for licensed staff is much more impactful than if you did not adopt the most recent language arts curriculum. Okay? Uh, as we look forward, um we have some newly adopted standards and and this is in relation to what was coming from last year into this year. Uh, and these will be big measures for us. Uh, right now, uh we have to implement two new graduation requirements at the high school level. Uh, one is a half-credit of personal finance and a half-credit of higher education and career path skills. Those will be two new classes that must be offered independently, meaning that you can't piece together standards from other classes and make a work. So we will have a standalone class for personal finance and a standalone class for higher education and career path skills. Uh, the second thing that we need to make sure we have implemented, starting for the twenty four twenty five school year, um is a planned K twelve instructional program for social emotional learning. Uh, that is the that that is pretty uh in place at the elementary and middle school levels uh through advisory programs and some very explicit instruction that's taking place. Uh, we will need to work on an articulated plan at the high school level for the twenty four twenty five year. Uh, the next is the menstrual dignity for students. Uh, we pretty much have this taken care of. It means that uh it requires free and accessible menstrual products uh in every school bathroom K twelve, as well as instructions on the use of those within bathrooms um and health education in classrooms as part of the health and sexuality education. Uh, Dave and his team have made sure that we have that uh in every bathroom in the district. Uh, so we are complying with that, but that is new to be fully reported on for the twenty four twenty five school year. We are gonna ask for some waivers, uh one of which uh is the essential skills graduation requirement. Uh, those are waived by the state um for all grades except for this year's ninth graders. Uh, and they um will have to go through um some local performance assessment requirements. Uh, those remain in effect. Those are some work sample requirements in reading, writing, and mathematics. Uh, but the state has waived those for us. Uh, and there's some work that we'll do at the high school level um because if you can recall, a student will not be able to earn a high school diploma unless they've met the essential essential skills for graduation. They can do that by either meeting um a performance level on a state test, uh a certain performance level on an S A T, P S A T, or A C T. Um, if they cannot meet in those areas, then we have local performance assessments. So students will actually sit in classes and perform a a writing sample, a reading work sample, and math work samples in classes that can then be scored against the state rubric um as meeting the essential skill. Okay? We have not had to do this since uh we closed for COVID. It's been on suspension, so we will need to do some work on how um we work with our high school students to bank scores along the way, so they don't end up in their senior year needing to do multiple work samples and not meeting. Uh, we have some great strategies to put in place. Uh, and I will say, um, I don't think I ever had a student not graduate from high school because of an essential skills issue. Uh, so we'll make sure that we have that dialed in. Uh, the next thing that we're uh that we are, we are literally gonna ask for a waiver on is the implementation of the personal finance uh and career path skills classes. Uh, if we did not ask for the waiver, this year's sophomores would need to have those by the time they graduate. Um, and we will not have enough time to A, plan out what that looks like, what year they take those classes, and how that fits into their course sequence. Uh, the next thing is it will require us to add classroom time to teachers, which means we'll either have to adjust what teachers currently teach or add teaching staff in order to meet those requirements. Um, so once we figure out what's going on with the contract, we settle everything out and we have an idea of of what our F T is gonna be, then we can make a much more articulated and quality plan to implement that. So we will have that ready to go for twenty four twenty five, and that will be a requirement for this year's ninth graders. When we look back at the twenty three twenty four year, um we have some corrective action that will be needed. One, as I just explained, uh meeting the goals of Senate Bill Three, which are those new graduation requirements. Uh, and we will need to create a corrective action plan uh for not meeting the curriculum adoption cycle. Uh, that would include K twelve mathematics, high school language arts, and high school science. So we will need to create a plan as to how we will go about adopting that curricula over the course of time. Looking ahead to make sure we're in compliance, uh as I shared, uh we need to ensure that we're implementing a K twelve social emotional learning program. We need to meet those new graduation requirements uh in personal finance and the higher education career path path and skills. Uh, we need to make sure that we have uh in place all of our essential skills and benchmark work samples, grades three through eight and then nine through twelve, uh to meet the essential skills of graduation for uh this year's ninth graders. And that's all I have for each amount of Division twenty two standards. If there are any questions, I'm gonna answer those.
Anybody have questions?
I would say I have one comment. Uh, my wife works at the Lamont E S D as a trainer and they have staff there that are ready to help people do curriculum adoptions. Currently in the Lamont E S D, that's twenty one school districts. There are no districts contemplating adoptions this year. Just because of the funding shortfall that the state has shut up.
Yep.
So we wouldn't be the only ones.
Right. Okay, um, new business, board policy, Andy, this is yours.
Yeah, this is uh a recommended policy from O S B A. Just is a clarification of board member qualifications. In general, uh the second paragraph there uh delineates if a district has a charter school, which it governs. Charters have their own board, but they still are sponsored by the school district, which exerts kind of a separate governance. It just says that a teacher at a charter school can't be on the public school board. Pretty simple. First reading.
Okay, uh.
Quick question on that. Uh, there's uh in the first sentence, there's a one following elector. And typically that refers to something down the line, I don't see what.
It says elector.
Oh, there it is, okay, there it is, I got that part, thank you.
Okay, there's.
That'll be up again next month.
Okay. Uh, Anne, is future gender items, do you have none, other business, none?
I I have other business.
Okay, let's go for it.
So it's my understanding that that
So it's my understanding that, that my friends, Senator Sarah Kelsner, was on purpose tonight rallying with the teachers. Good, good, good for Sarah. Um, she probably didn't tell you that she voted, uh, to, uh, education and education salaries at three percent lower than she voted for, uh, the rest of the state budgets for the rest of the state employees. And she probably didn't tell you that because you probably didn't ask her. I don't, I don't blame you for that. And, and if you did ask her, she would tell you. That she voted for what was put in front, in front of her by the O E A leadership, by the, the School Boards Association leadership, by the education players. There, there was, um, a bad mistake made in the formulation of what those asks should have been. And to the, to this point, nobody has corrected that. I, I've brought it up on a number of occasions. And I, I see, uh, the teachers' needs and my position, I, I, I think at times the board's position is, we want the best compensated staff in the state. We need to compete. But unfortunately, we don't have a printing press. If, I, I wish we did. And so at some point, I hope that we collectively can work together to, to get the funding, uh, error that was made corrected as we go forward and get the education funding budget at a level it needs to be at. And that, that's, that's just the fact of the matter and we collectively and individually have been dancing around that for some time. But I'm concerned because I don't see, I don't see that working together to solve the underlying fundamental problems that we all are gonna need to have to, to get the funding of education at the place it needs to be. Thank you for the opportunity.
Anyone else? Looking for a motion? Mr. Chairman, I move to adjourn tonight's meeting.
Second.
Favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposed? We're done for the night, everyone have a good evening.